Welcome to the 2 o'clock showing of the town hall. So appreciate everybody that's come down. This will be the third group. As always, whenever you see these emails come out or the invitations for these town hall meetings, if you have any suggestions about topics that you would like to hear or updates, please let us know. And that way we can make sure that we're covering what you want to hear because it's for you. That's why we're here. And so there were no suggestions on this one, so y'all have complete faith and confidence that we're going to be able to know exactly what to talk about. Same as always, at the end, I'll ask again, is there any topics that we have not touched on that you thought we were going to and then maybe didn't get around to? So be thinking about that if you were coming down here going, yep, I want to hear about this, and then we didn't touch on it. So always have to make myself a note. For those that don't know me, hi, I'm Randy Davis. I'm the CEO. If we don't know each other, and you don't know that, we need to get better acquainted. But I have been sending out monthly CEO updates now, I guess for two, and in fact, there should be another one coming out either this afternoon or tomorrow, once I get it edited down. So I hope you find those beneficial. But what I've also found in the town hall meetings is it also negates the need for me to stand up here and tell you anything. So I can ask later, if y'all have any questions about those topics, Chris is going to expand on several of those topics that come out in those updates. But I hope you find those helpful. Again, kind of the same thing with the town hall meetings. I'm putting those together for you. They're not for me. I already know what I did. And so if, again, you're hearing things or thinking of things that you want in the community or that are going on with the organization, let me know. I'll just include it in the update. You'll have all the information there, and we can just make sure that everyone is fully informed. Because what I don't want is for you to be in a situation to where you're finding out something about the organization in which you work from people who aren't within the organization, right? That's always frustrating when you talk to a friend or family and they're going, hey, what are y'all doing over here? What building did you build? And you're going, I have no clue. So we'll try and make sure we've got good communication going back and forth. Some updates on some other things that you'll see coming along. The biggest thing that we're going to start doing is we're about to pressure wash the exterior of the hospital, and we are going to repaint and reseal it. So for those of you who are lucky enough to be here 24 years ago and got to see the original color of the hospital, you're about to see the original color of the hospital again. So we're actually repainting it the exact same color as it was before 24 years ago. But probably the best thing is really in terms of the pressure washer and the power washing. I mean, we're in the state of Tennessee. It's a little bit humid, as y'all can see. Sometimes you get some of the little dark funk growing on the bricks, and so to be able to take that off will be great. The other thing that you should see around campus is that the Northcrest Foundation is paying to put new signage up. And so they're cleaning and sprucing up the signs. They're putting our new logo on them and bringing forward a little bit different color scheme, which you will see that as we begin doing a lot of things and kind of the spring cleaning of the hospital, we'll have some others. So if you'll notice briefly, the awnings that cover the 200, the entranceway to the 200 building, 300 building, 400 building, they're still the old green. So as we get the signs done, then they're also looking to change out the canopies and begin making sure that everything pulls together. But those are dollars that you all have donated to the foundation, and they've taken that on as a capital project. So I'm excited about that. I think it's going to make a great change to the hospital and just have that different look to it, and it just needs to be done. After that, the big capital project is we need to seal the parking lot at least one more time, so we need to repair the little holes that are in it, seal it one more time, and that means that in about two years, y'all, I'm sorry, it's a repaving project. And y'all know what that means for your own parking and for patient parking and everything else, but we're coming up on probably in the next three to, two to three years, we're going to have to repave. So it's always good stuff. But then we'll have a completely clean, repainted hospital and a really, really smooth surface. Maybe one day roller skates will come back and we can all start playing with those again. And it'll be a good one to roller skate on. Last thing is an update. I am not sure who all is aware, you should be aware, but don't know how much it impacts you, but as you'll notice in town hall, there's no Kim Pridgen up here giving a report for the financials, right? She's gone on to be the chief financial officer of the Nashville Zoo. So it's a great job, it's going to make her the grandmother of the year. She did it the best way that you can possibly leave an organization. So she made sure, she gave us plenty of time, so we were able to crank up a CFO search. And so we're actually getting to the tail end of that and have narrowed it down to a finalist and working through kind of the negotiations with that one. And hopefully I'll be able to announce to you pretty soon that we'll have a new CFO identified and I can get them introduced to you. So I'm excited about that, and I'm sure some of the folks that are having a deal more directly with me in the accounting department are excited about that, too. So we'll get those things knocked out and get you all introduced very quickly. But with that said, I am going to turn it over to Chris Locke, VP of Business Development.
Good afternoon. How is everybody today? Ah, so-so, okay. So let me introduce myself. My name is Chris Locke. I'm the Vice President of Business Development. Normally, I do not bore you with a PowerPoint. I do it without one. But today, we thought we would go ahead and get a little bit of extracurricular for you today. First off, let's talk about our mission. That mission is to develop revenue generating growth through existing and new lines of service by our relationships and effectively communicating the quality experience of Northcrest Medical Center, Northcrest Physician Services to our internal and our external customers. What that means is I'm challenged with growth and making sure that the people in this community in our service area understand what our service lines are in adding or expanding on service lines that we're able to serve our community with, okay? And that's really what it boils down to. Frankly, that is my goal and is all of our goals, regardless of the role that we play here at Northcrest Medical Center. So a couple of goals for today's, one is some just updates on urology. The other is for nephrology. Orthopedics, we're going to talk about an EMS project and what that outline is. We've talked about EMS a lot in the past. And then we're going to talk about some communication responsibilities. So first of all, urology, Dr. DeLorenz, does everybody know who Dr. DeLorenz is? Yes, we got a lot of nods, yes. We've got some maybe not. I will tell you, bless you so. Last week, I met an individual that works here that came up and said, what are we going to do about urology? Okay? And I said, well, we do have Dr. DeLorenz. He's been here for several months now. He is set up in clinic in 308. He and Ms. Ashley Brower, who is his nurse practitioner. One of the great responses to that is that the patients that are coming out of that are completely satisfied. And I think we're doing a great job from a surgery perspective, and I am looking forward to our future engagement. But, you know, it concerns me with one of our own folks don't know that Dr. DeLorenz has been added. That doesn't seem too unreasonable, does it? It's hard to communicate. It's hard to communicate. So one of the big growth opportunities that we have is Dr. DeLorenz is actually expanding his practice with Dr. Vidhu Yarlagata, okay? Now, when I first got that email that Dr. Vidhush Yarlagata was going to come and visit as a new partner, I expected something different. Dr. Vidhu Yarlagata is actually from Nashville. He and his wife are from here, and he has a bigger southern drawl than I do. So it was a little off-putting when I first read the email. A great gentleman. We're very glad to have him coming on board. He should start with Dr. DeLorenz's practice around August. More than likely, that looks like a November startup, though, okay? When they're really starting in August, that really means October, November, all right? That's going to expand coverage here for urology. It's going to expand our surgical services. It aids not only our inpatient stays, our ED visits, but it also expands the perception of quality at Northcrest Medical Center. I think we had talked earlier, we were looking at 12 or 13 transfers a month for urology right now, when we did not have coverage. We are excited about his expanding coverage and the increase of coverage with Dr. Yarlagata. So we're looking forward to that. By the way, Ashley's fantastic. She does a lot of uro-gyni work, is doing some uro-dynamics over there as well. She's got an extensive history in uro-gynecology, so super positive of that as well. Nephrology, so let's talk about nephrology associates for a second. Has anyone heard that nephrology associates is pulling out and headed back down to Nashville? Has everybody heard that? Nobody's heard that rumor? Okay, it's true. It's true. So they have gone the route of urology associates and have gone route of several of the other larger groups. They are centralizing in metro service areas. And I understand the bottom line of those things. I understand from an operating expense, once you've been in a rural, outlying community for a little while, for several years, you've built up a patient base, you can abandon that community and go back to the metro service area, not have the operating expense, and then at that point, a portion of that patient base is going to follow you downtown because they don't have any other options, right? I understand that. I really do. I don't like it because I think it leaves not only us as an organization in an inopportune position, but it also leaves our community without a care and service line. I am very thankful to be able to tell you, we believe we have found a nephrology partner that will take over that inpatient coverage and provide outpatient services to this community as of July 1. I'm being a little vague about that because we still haven't crossed Ts and dotted Is, okay? But in principle, verbally, there's been an acceptance, yes, we want to do this, but now there can always be a detail that comes a barrier. But we really believe that we have found coverage for July 1, that this will not be an issue for us or our patient base, okay? That's exciting to hear. Any questions about that, just while I'm stopping on it, sitting on it? Nephrology's important. Nephrology's important, right? We had 188 individual patients in 2018. That equates to somewhere around 900 consult days. We had 310 inpatient dialysis procedures in 2018. That doesn't sound like a lot when you're looking at, you know, 3,500 to 4,000 admissions, but let me tell you, recently, my family's had a nephrology issue. It's important when it's you. It's important when it's you. And we're going to provide that coverage here at Northcrest Medical Center for this community, okay? It won't be with nephrology associates. Orthopedics partner. This one's a little weird. We've not done this before. So there is a PA-led orthopedics clinic that has about six clinics right now in middle Tennessee, and we are on track in the very final stages of solidifying that PA-run orthopedics clinic to be in White House no later than fall of this year. Northcrest Orthopedics and the surgeons associated with Northcrest Orthopedics will be the supervising physicians and doing the surgeries for that orthopedic clinic. That expands our orthopedic coverage east of our market into the White House area, particularly addressing the needs in Portland, in Cross Plains, in White House, further into Sumner County, allowing us to grow what is already a very prominent service line here at Northcrest. Frankly, we just do a really good job with orthopedics, okay? So we need to do more of what we do well. There's an opportunity, and this is what they've seen with their other clinics, anywhere from 200 to 250 orthopedic surgeries coming out of those clinics per year. They're all going to be on Monday afternoons, okay? I saw you. I saw you hiding. I saw you. They may not be on Monday afternoons, but they're going to be in our surgeries. We're really excited about that. Again, I'm being a little bit vague because we are absolutely at the end of that, but literally at lunch, I got an email today that said everything's good and let's get together and get a timeline set. So that looks like this fall, okay? So you'll see some more to come out of that. 200 to 250 orthopedic surgeries a year, it's a changer. That's a changer. So look for that. But that is a little weird. We've not done that type of partnership before. We're excited about it. All right, EMS. So last time we talked, and probably the time before that, and probably the time before that, we talked about EMS, right? So what's the problem with EMS? What's been our issue? Bypass, right? Bypass. We're picking up Robertson County patients and we're headed downtown, okay? So I do want to start by telling you thank you. The last time we spoke, there was a question and an ask for our county commissioners' contact information to be put out. Many of you reached out to your county commissioners. Some of those were on the EMS committee, and that made a difference to the engagement that we have had with EMS. Thank you for being engaged in the process improvement and relationship with Northcrest Medical Center and our sister agencies. And thank you for using your abilities to be an ambassador for Northcrest. It made a difference. I appreciate it. So I'm really going to bore you, and for those that are watching on video, I'm sorry for just getting in the way and turning it around, but we'll see what this looks like. So this is the actual project charter that has been adopted by the EMS committee and the EMS leadership, and this is what we're going to be working on as an engagement tool. So I'm going to bore us a little bit, and we're going to talk about it. So what the business case is, is improved and measured engagement between Robertson County EMS and Northcrest aids the work of both sister agencies to provide care for our citizens while reducing costs and improving the volume of medical services delivered in Robertson County. Here's what that means. When you bring patients here, not only does it aid us as an organization, but it allows us to expand the coverage of medical services here for our constituents, and it reduces the cost that is necessary to run an EMS service. That's all it means. It's what we should be doing. Here's a problem. Robertson County EMS currently delivers X number of runs to facilities outside of Robertson County. I'm going to give you that number here in just a minute. Increasing run times, run cost, fuel, vehicle maintenance, and decreasing coverage. If you're out of county, you can't do a transfer if you need to do a transfer out of our cath lab. If you're out of county and it's my area and my wife breaks her leg, they're not going to be there to come and get her. Another unit is going to have to come and cross-cover, right? Then they're going to spend more time and money in payroll, they're going to spend more time in fuel or more money in fuel and vehicle maintenance. So anything that we can do to engage more deliveries here, we're better off not only for us, but also for EMS, and I would argue with you that it is better for the patient. Goal statement. Through a continued engagement effort and measurement plan, we will reduce runs out of county by X percent. I'll give you that number here in a minute. And I'll just go ahead and tell you, it's about 20%. From 2018, by communicating local scope of services and promoting support for the local facility, the average run cost reduction from 2018 by X percent, we don't know what that means yet. But if you reduce out by 20%, you may be willing to say you can reduce your run cost by just about the same percentage. That math may not work, but it's close. Project will be active for 18 months. That's really what it looks like. So again, thank you for engaging with your leadership. Thank you for working to do this because this is an adopted measurement plan. So to fix anything, what's the first step? What's the first step? Got to find it, right? Got to find it. So you define it, then you've got to measure it. So if it's not measured, you're never going to improve. And that's really what the make is, right? It's define, measure, analyze, improve, and control. And that's really what we're trying to do. Define our problem, admit there is a problem, and that has happened again with your help. Now we have to measure it and understand it. And I will tell you that through our engagement and through this piece, we have gone a long way towards a measurement plan. I want to share you some of that. One of them, I'm going to skip. I'll tell you what it is. It's a run data, not only in total, but it also shows out of county, and it shows by station all the way back to 2003, okay? By month. By month. So it allows us the opportunity not only to benchmark us against last year, but it allows us to really go back in time, back into our heyday and say, where should we be, right? Where should we be? So let me ask you this question. We would say 2004 was probably a pretty good year for rural community hospitals. It was probably a pretty good year for us. We were almost new to this facility. We were also new where we were. What do you think the runs look like from EMS in 2004 compared to today? So 2018, I'll go ahead and tell you, it was higher than in 2004. I'll give you that answer. In 2004, there was almost 1,000 runs out of the county, okay? 900 and some odd. In 2018, there was 1,670. Now, we have to really look at that by percentage, right, of runs? Because there's probably a clinical acuity in there somewhere that's going to bypass us, or maybe a little bit of the geography that's going to bypass us, or maybe there is a little bit of patient preference that will bypass us. So let's look at it by percentage. The percentage increase in total runs was actually a 3.7% increase. That's where we need to start. If we can get back to the 2004 number, okay? That 12.9% out of county, that's going to pick us up another 370, 375 deliveries to our ED. Assuming that 75 or 80% of those are admissions, that helps us today. We can continue to work on this project over and over again as we go down the list of what will provide the best care for the patients in this county and also provide the best resource for EMS and for Northcrest, okay? But if we can pick up that 375 now, that is the start. And that's also the start to rebuilding the relationship. So not only can we talk about it in terms of numbers and just talk about total number of runs, we can also talk about what is actually bypassing us. This is the total number of runs in 2018 that went outside the county. So there's your 1,000, maybe. There's our 1,670 number. This is what their chief complaint was when they were picked up by EMS, okay? Now, some of this will just make you mad, right? So when you take a look at it and you say a UTI, why would seven UTIs go somewhere else? Well, we don't know yet, right? We don't know. I can tell you, as we go up, we'll see stroke at 70. So here, 70 for stroke. We can care for those patients. I would argue that as a primary stroke center, we probably should, okay? We probably should. So this gives us the opportunity to clinically address some of our patients that are going outside of this county via EMS as to why, how can we improve that service, or how can we just better communicate that service so that we understand, all of us, that that patient should come here? That includes the patient themselves, okay? So let's talk about things that maybe we need to measure as well. So one of the things that we don't want to see happen is that we do get that extra 20% of the run volume that comes here because it is better clinically for the patient and it aids EMS and it aids Northcrest Medical Center, but those 20% actually just get transferred right back out. I will tell you that I went to the captain's meeting, and that was said, hey, we could deliver more patients, but we're just going to have to transfer them right back out. My question is, well, how often? You know, simply because I don't work off feel very often? Much more work off of the number? Well, it happens a ton, happens all the time. But what's the number? Nobody knows the number. Guess what? We didn't know that number either. Now we do. This is the number. In March, it was 10. This is the number of patients that were brought in by Robertson County EMS. This is the number that arrived and left by Robertson County EMS, okay? But this is something that we need to watch to make sure that we don't pick up an extra 150 deliveries, but just deliver them right back out. That doesn't aid the patient, it doesn't aid us, nor does it aid EMS, okay? And for this relationship to be rebuilt, okay? We're going to have to do our part from a project perspective to make sure that we are doing the best for the patient and doing the best for our community. Now, unfortunately, in my life, I've had to rebuild a relationship before, okay? It's harder to rebuild one than it is to build one the first time. What happens? You take that step forward towards rebuilding that relationship, you probably take the second step, you probably take the third step, then something happens. Then where do you go? And you might go all the way back to the very beginning. You may have to do that four, five, six times before that relationship just keeps getting stronger all the time. And that's the same thing that's going to happen here as we rebuild our relationship with our sister agency at EMS. I will tell you, at that same captain's meeting, there were several captains in that room that did not believe we had orthopedic coverage on the weekends. Sounds incredible, right? Does that not sound incredible to think? I mean, it really is. And I'll tell you where that came from. About eight years ago, they brought somebody in on a Sunday, and somebody said supposedly at the ED, well, hey, the orthopedic is not going to come in anyway, so you might as well transfer them. Well, that automatically turned into, we don't have orthopedic coverage in the ED. It's incredible to think that that would occur, but maybe not really, considering I met somebody that works here, that's a long-term employee here, that last week didn't know we had urology coverage. So it's not really too far-fetched to believe that someone outside of our family that is not here every day, that doesn't get our emails and our communication board and doesn't come into our elevator all the time with pictures everywhere and doesn't listen to our hold music all the time, may not know that. So we're engaging in a couple of different things to fix this. One is committee representation. So we have Northcrest committee representation at EMS every time. That measure plan is, that measurement plan will actually be included in the run reports for the EMS committee. I'm thankful for that. We are attending the captain's meeting, and that's really where this work is going to go on, okay? The first captain's meeting, I heard an awful lot of stuff, right? A lot of things that maybe we can do to aid the progress, right? And a little bit about what they can do to aid the progress. Next is project meetings, making sure that we're doing the measurement plan, making sure that we're putting controls in place and action plans that surround the problems themselves. The next is EMS week. It's a term of engagement. There are corporations out there that are buying EMS workers Roos Chris Steakhouse for dinner for EMS week. We're not going to be doing that. We can't do that. We just can't. We can't do that. But we can recognize EMS week, right? Get them some barbecue and some tater tots and say, hey, thanks for serving this patient county as well, and treat them like a customer. Now, let me say this. This game has changed. It really doesn't matter how we feel about it. It doesn't matter if we believe it. What matters is it is true today because our competitors, some years ago, started treating EMS like a customer, which means if we're going to be competitive, we will be doing exactly the same thing. And frankly, we should. We have internal customers and external customers. We are all internal customers. EMS is one of our internal customers. Should we not treat them as such? I'll also ask you this. Who's our external customer? Who are they? They're easy to find. Who are they? Who? Doctors are internal. Who would be our external customers? Patients. Patients. They're easy to find, right? It's easy to be nice to a patient. It's easy to treat a patient like a customer. We do that really, really well. But where we can improve is by treating our sister agencies, our physicians, and each other like an internal customer, and that makes a difference. Education. Jennifer Helwig was kind enough to open up an education piece in April for Dr. Kenneth Gaines from Vanderbilt, the neurologist. He's on the stroke committee. He came and spoke to EMS. There was open communication and open discussion by EMS leadership based on the data that was shown by Dr. Gaines of changing their bypass protocol. I'm thankful for that. That's movement. And in turn, we're making some movement as well that will include and increase the present perception that we have around stroke and also increases the perception of what we can handle from an EMS perspective. That's movement, and I'm appreciative of it. And those are the quarterly events. In July, I think it's cardiology, and we're looking to do something in October and November as well, okay? So it's all about measurement, engagement, and education. Now, we talked about that relationship taking a step forward and a step back or two. I don't know if anybody saw this, and I'm not trying to embarrass the gentleman that posted that up. The names are all cut out of that, but I got a text about 10:30 at night one night that this was on social media. That's three Robertson County EMS underneath the Skyline ambulance bay, okay? Now, in the past, we'd just be mad about it. At least at this point, this gentleman was called by his leadership. That social media post was taken down, and he called to apologize. And called to say, man, I didn't mean it like that. I just didn't realize it could come off this way. Now, by the numbers, 4.6 of those trucks are down at Skyline anyway every day, so it may not be So, it may not be that uncommon to see three there. But the perception in our community is of clinical inadequacy when you see something like that. So, we are working not only to help change our community's perception, but change the way EMS perceives us as a sister agency. Did that hurt a little bit when I saw that? Did I, you think I took a step or two back? It's okay. Because the trick to rebuilding that relationship is not that you're not willing to go back and forward, it's that you're just willing to be in a relationship. And when it really breaks down, is when you just cut it off. And we're not going to be willing to do that. We need to serve this community, and they need to help us, and we need to help them. Here's another one. This is a text of an ambulance that actually ended up coming our way. But it was a text from a community member that said, hey, this is headed to the hospital, but the paramedic said, hey, don't you, you sure you don't want to go to Skyline for that? Hmm, that hurts. In the past, we would just be mad about this. At this point, that paramedic's been identified with EMS leadership, and we're going to go have a conversation. Not an ugly conversation, just why? We had two captains that didn't know we had orthopedic coverage on the weekend. There's a really good chance that this paramedic just doesn't know. So, let's have the open discussion. I really don't care the answer. The answer might be, I just don't like you, Chris. Well, that's fine, too. We'll figure that out. We'll find a different solution for that problem. But the reality is, is now we have the opportunity to address it. We already know we're going to take a couple steps forwards, we're going to take a couple steps back. I'm going to ask for this. If you have something like this, please let me know. And I will commend Angie Minton. Angie texted me at 10:30 at night with that. Hey, did you see this? Not yet. But by 7:30 the next morning, we were already addressing the issue, right? And getting this down. So, if you have something like that, please let me know. I'm not trying to kill them with anecdotal stuff or one-offs, right? We're working on data. But what we really need to do is also uncover where some of those problems lie. Okay? Is that fair enough? Now, let's talk about communication. And we, we've already identified that some of our problem with EMS is communication, but we also identified some of our problems, communication. One of the hardest things that there is to do is communicate, right? Say, we've got a family of somewhere around 800 in total, FTEs and part-time, close to that. 500 at full-time, right, right at it. That's hard to communicate all the different things that have happened. It's hard to communicate all the different change. And even harder to get it not be gossip by the third person that heard it. Right? And that's just true. So, when we talk about communication, let's identify a few things. How does this organization communicate? Now, you're trying to take a nap, but let me wake you up for just a second. This is not a rhetorical question. So, how does this organization communicate? Give me one way.
Email.
Email. It's great. Give me another way. Facebook. Facebook. Social media. Okay? What's another way? Say again, dear? Town hall meeting. Thank you so much. Thank you so, what's another way? While you're thinking about the next way, because there's like, hmm, five more, 67 people watched the last town hall. Okay? 67. Needs to be more than that, right? Needs to be more than that. Could you say? Who said billboard? Somebody say billboard? You said billboard? Say it loud. Say, say it like you mean it. Proud billboard. 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 Okay, billboards, we do that, marketing. How else do we communicate? How about to one another? How do we communicate to one another? How about communication board? Phone. Phone. We communicate by word of mouth. Let's talk about talking to each other, right? Or the on-hold call, right? We also communicate by take fives. Mr. Davis's update email. We also communicate by the intranet when you log on, right? There's all kinds of data right there. We communicate via the newsletters that come out. There's a ton of ways that this organization communicates changes, whether it be a policy, or it be new providers, or new opportunities here at Northcrest. So, what is your role in communicating? It includes me. What's our role in communicating? What are we challenged to do? What do you think? We need to be informed. I agree. So, I'm going to put this twofold. Is one, your role in communicating is to actively seek out the information. The avenues there are there for us to learn what's going on. If you are well-informed in this organization, there's a really good chance you try to be informed. If you're ill-informed, and you're in this organization, there is a great opportunity that you don't try to be informed, because all of this information is available. This is a pretty transparent organization. At least, I find it to be that way. And I don't mean because it's behind a closed-door meeting. I mean because you can watch the town hall. I'll go back to Dr. D. Lorenz and last week. How many town halls have we talked about urology and Dr. D. Lorenz? I know the last three. Okay? I know the last three. And that's just one method of communication. All right? So, one, you have an active responsibility to be informed. Look at the pathways of information. They are there. If you're not getting the information that you need, ask. Be informed. Now, why is this key to our success? And I'll answer this one for you. Your role is the key to this success, and that's not just being actively informed, but then telling somebody else. Telling your partner here at Northcrest, and then expanding that to your sphere of influence in the community. Because if we don't know what lines of service we have here, and we don't know the coverage we have, can we truly expect our EMS partners to? Can we truly expect our neighbors and our friends that may be bypassing this facility when they could get great care here? Mr. Davis, several years ago, challenged us all with being ambassadors to Northcrest Medical Center. And I'd like to reiterate that challenge today, and say, the start of you being an ambassador here is to be informed, and be able to educate the people that are in your sphere of influence to understand what we have, whether they be your partner here at Northcrest, whether they be your partner at home, whether they be your sphere of influence in your church, your civic organization, or frankly, anywhere in your neighborhood. That's the difference that we can make. Okay? That's how you can aid this cause of making sure that we see growth of the medical services that are needed in Robertson County. Okay? All right, I bored us enough. All right, I'll answer anything, tell you the truth, or tell you I don't know, and both of them will be that. Any questions, all? Yes, ma'am?
So, with all that orthopedic volume?
Yes.
Knowing that we have a lot of orthopedic volume, like, are we looking at possibly getting another surgeon, or?
Tell you next, tell you next week. There is always the opportunity for us to grow that service line. Okay? Is that vague enough?
That's fine. I still want to, I still want to, I want to, I want to overlook.
I'm with you on that. I'm with you on that. I'm with you on that. What else? All right, with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Angie Beard.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
So, I think I know most of you, but if there's somebody that I don't, my name's Angie Beard. I'm the Vice President and Chief Nursing and Chief Clinical Officer. So, some of you may have heard, but on the clinical side, we'll be moving from all scripts inpatient and all scripts ED, we're going to be moving to med-hose clinical. All areas except the ED will go live on November 5th, and then the ED will go live on January the 14th. Now, as Mr. Davis pointed out at earlier town hall meeting, the reason we're doing that is kind of twofold. The ER system is going away, it's sunsetting, and we, so we have to replace it. The other reason is because we're going to barcode administration for medication, so that'd be safer for the patient. That's what we need to do. So, there's two reasons why we're moving. We're also changing press gain for our patient satisfaction to NRC Health. So, the patients that are discharged as of July 1st, on outpatient arena, the outpatient ambulatory arena, they will be getting either an email, or like a robocall, a phone call that's an interactive call, is what they call them. On the inpatient side, on those discharges, they'll be actually talking to a person, they'll be a phone call, and they'll be actually talking to a person on the surveys. Externs, you know, it's summer, it's time for our students, all of our students, and those are the people that's going to take care of us when we're all old, right? So, our externs will be here, those are the nursing students. They will be here May 10th to July 28th. The ship students, those are ages 14 to 17. They'll be here from July the 15th to July the 26th. And then our campers, those are the students that are going into their senior year, they will be here from June 10th to June 21st. I know that's a lot of students, a lot of people falling out in the OR and in the ER, and be ready. What about hospital week? This is hospital week. What about those gifts out there? It's pretty nice. Those are for everybody. And we have some other activities going on this week. How many of you took advantage of the Kona Ice truck yesterday? That was a nice change. Town hall meetings are today with the gifts. Tomorrow morning, down here in the ABC conference rooms, there'll be the breakfast of champions. And then awards will be down here also from 2:00 to 3:00. Then Thursday, we have the cookout. It'll be out beside the cafeteria, be a cookout for days, and then there'll be dinner and for evening shift and for night shift also. And then Friday, we have the, our annual awards for the hospital over at Highland Crest that morning, and then there will be snacks passed out, and the cart will come around on night shift, there'll be snacks during the day from 2:00 to 4:00. And then Saturday, for the weekend shift, there'll be the gifts given away, and there'll be a snack cart going around on the weekends also. We just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for your service, to tell you we appreciate you as our hospital employees. Does anybody know, usually when I talk at the town hall meetings, I talk about infections, healthcare acquired, and conditions, and such as that. Does anyone know what the, what the worst infection in a hospital is? Negativity. Negativity. And you know what? It's the most contagious. It's infectious and it's contagious. But you know who can stop it? We all can. And I challenge you to go out there and do that. There's a lot of, there's a lot of change going on, there's a lot of turmoil going on. It just seems like, it seems like senior admin wakes up every morning and says, what can we do to go in and just shake things up and make everybody angry? But I promise you, we don't. We don't go out of our way to do that. This healthcare is so fluid and dynamic and changing constantly, that we have to keep up with that. So, we try to stay a step ahead. And to do that, we try to smooth that transition as easily as we can for the, for the rest of the employees. So, we don't really just dream of change just to, just to make it worse. We're just trying to move with the times and get us where we need to be as a hospital. Do y'all have any questions of me? Okay, then I'll turn it back over to Mr. Davis.
And I'll be super brief. So, that concludes every topic that we felt that we should bring forward to you. What have we not talked about?
Pleasant View.
Pleasant View. So, there is, you should, see, I think it was in the news, was it in the newsletter? The ribbon cutting for, I'm looking, did we put that in the newsletter? If not, we'll have to put it in the next one then. So, we've got the ribbon cutting coming up for Pleasant View, you said the 17th, on the 17th. So, we invite you out there, it's from 11:00 to 2:00. For those of you that are involved with the Employee Service Awards, it's on that Fri, right after that Friday, you can just load up, just go out to Pleasant View, and you can get another meal. It's heavy work, herbs. So, we'll have the ribbon cutting out there. Still continuing to work with Vanderbilt on getting that walk-in clinic open, so that's, that's still progressing. We finally got everything back from the attorneys, which has taken forever. So, we, we should be good to go out there. And we need to hurry in Pleasant View, because there's a ton of building going on out there, a ton of houses. And I think everybody's using that Ashland City Highway now to avoid being on the interstate. Other questions? All right. Well, with that, that'll conclude it.